Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. And at our regular board meeting, the time right now is 6:04. I will hand it over to Ms. List for the call to order.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Star Ledger, El Nueva Coqui, Haiti Progress, and Luso Americano newspapers, and by distribution to administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. A copy of this meeting notice was forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting, Tuesday, August 27, 2019, 6:03.
If everyone can please stand for the flag salute. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is sent one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Bledsoe? Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Ms. Haynes?
Present.
Ms. Hill? Ms. Murray Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Norton?
Present.
Mr. Padilla?
Present.
We have a call.
Can we have a motion to amend the agenda tonight, please? Motion.
That was a motion by Ms. Haynes. Second by Ms. Hill. As I understand the motion, it is to move items under the headings 9.0, 10.0, 11.0, and 12.0 before the superintendent's report, that is after the board president's report, 5.0, and before 6.0. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the minutes, that is item 4.0.
Motion.
Items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3. Motion by Ms. Haynes?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson?
Who was it?
Gomez.
Ms. Gomez, thank you. Any discussion? Any questions by board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. List, and good evening, everyone. Fellow board members, Superintendent Leon, ladies and constituents. I'm Josephine Garcia, the president of the Board of Education. Welcome back to the 2019-2020 school year. There are so many exciting things happening in the district. While we had some great accomplishments last year, this school year primed and positioned to be even better. The Board continues to focus on governance and policy development. On July 1st, the Board completed the superintendent's evaluation within established timeframes. The summer visual arts and performance culminating ceremony was held at Arts High School on July 2nd. On July 11th, board members participated in the American Dairy Association's summer feeding kickoff at School Stadium. On August 21st, board members supported the new teachers' orientation at Park Elementary School. It was nice to see and interact with the new talent who have joined Newark Public Schools District. To prepare for the new school year, we had a board retreat on Saturday, August 24th. Retreats provide board members with an opportunity to be introspective and a chance to focus on the Board as a whole and discuss how we can become more effective in supporting students, staff, community, and district initiatives. We also discussed attendance and the student achievement data, which you will hear more about from Superintendent Leon. Another topic was the transition plan. According to the report that our highly skilled professional, Ms. Nelms, introduced, I'm pleased to share that the Board continues to meet the requirements laid out in the plan, and the good news that the community, we are on track to regain full local control January 2020. NTU members voted to accept the proposed changes to their contract. Ninety-three point forty-six percent of the members said yes. Six point fifty-four said no. Newark teachers have spoken and have overwhelmingly endorsed their five-year contract. Tonight, the final step, the members of the Board of Education will take action. Earlier today, board members joined the superintendent as he welcomed all district staff back for the start of the new school year at the 2019 staff convocation. We were honored to be a part of this amazing event. Everyone was excited and the energy was charged. Just an indication that the staff is motivated, ready to soar, and reach new heights. So while bringing greetings and introducing my fellow board members at the convocation, I failed to mention one board member, which was Board Member Hill. While this does not make up for the error, I hope you will accept my sincere and humble apologies, Ms. Hill. Our annual second backpack rally, which is co-sponsored by the Newark Board of Education and the City of Newark and many vendors, will be onsite with a range of fun activities for everyone. The rally is scheduled to take place this Thursday, August 29th, between the hours of 3:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. at School Stadium, Bloomfield Avenue in Newark. Nearly 600 families have registered and signed up for the event. There is still time to register, so please visit the district's website for registration information. As a reminder, the child must be present in order to receive a backpack. Just in case it rains, the rain day will be August 30th. The event was very successful last year at Shabazz Field, and this year, we're looking forward to having another successful backpack giveaway. The Office of Food Services will be onsite to assist families in completing lunch applications. Families can complete the application online, or they can visit the food services at 765 Broad Street, second floor for personal assistance, or at the Day at the Backpack Rally, we will have onsite lunch application registrations taking place. In a moment, I'm going to announce the 2019-2020 student representative. But I want to share how you can become a student representative. For any current 10th or 11th grade student, the district revised the student representatives' selection process in an effort to make it more equitable. In previous years, the representative was chosen as a result of an interview or by the total number of votes. This year, we improved the rubric to give candidates an increased opportunity to control his or her outcome based on their individual performance. Candidates submit an application, participate in a candidate briefing meeting facilitated by the superintendent and board members, campaign for the vote, participate in a panel discussion. They all performed extremely well, and the only disappointment is that all of them could not win. Congratulations to our new student rep, Bruno Colejo, of Science Park High School. We look forward to you joining the Parent Engagement and Student Life Committee. Ms. Deering will make the necessary arrangements for you to sit down with Board Member Gomez before the September meeting. The first day of school is Tuesday, September 3rd. Last year, all the schools did not have the same start time, which was a bit confusing. You spoke, the superintendent heard you. And now the elementary school day begins at 8:25 a.m. and high schools at 8:10 a.m. The only exception is the JFK, which starts at 8:15. The district's goal is 100% attendance. Every day matters. Together, we can all help make this goal a reality. Call your family members, friends, students, and neighbors to remind them that the first day of school is September 3rd. Commit to making at least one wake-up call on the first day of school or join the superintendent's Give Me Five campaign, which was very successful last year. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and I'll hand it over now to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Actually, no, we moved the action items.
Sorry, we're going to move on to the action items.
We need a motion to approve action items listed under heading 9.0. That is 9.1 through 9.47.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Norton. Second by Ms. Haynes. Any discussion? Any questions by board members? We'll have a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam President, I just would like to be noted as a yes vote for the approval of the minutes. Did we do that?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Now we need a motion for approval of items under the heading 10.0, which is 10.1 through 10.17.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Anderson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gomez. Any discussion? Any questions by board members? We'll have a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve items under the heading 11.0 Personnel. That is items 11.1. I'm not sure the hard copy agenda is correct. 11.1 through 11.8. So are there more? Yes. 11.10. Martha, is that the last one?
Oh, yes, okay. I see.
Okay, we need a motion to approve 11.1 through 11.12.
Motion.
Second.
Can we just read for the record what's all the items? Because it's not updated here.
The one on the screen is the updated one. So what's on the hard copy is through 11.8. What's on the screen is 11.9, Resolution of the Board of Education of the City of Newark, County of Essex, approving the collective negotiations agreement between the Board and the Newark Teachers Union for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2024. 11.10, Resolution of the Board of Education of the City of Newark, County of Essex, authorizing amendment of the employment contract of Superintendent Roger Leon. 11.11, Resolution of the Board of Education of the City of Newark, County of Essex, extension of contract for medical, vision, dental, and prescription drug insurance coverage. 11.12, Resolution of the Board of Education of the City of Newark, County of Essex, awarding a contract for medical, vision, dental, and prescription drug insurance coverage. Did we have a motion? It did?
Second.
Done. Okay. Any discussion? Any questions by board members on any of the items? We'll have a roll call.
I personally, Madam President, I personally think out of respect for our superintendent, I think we should separate that item and vote on it separately so that we know that there's unanimous support to amend the contract for the issue two years.
He wants to support 11.0. Separate it. 11.10, he wants to separate.
I mean, it's up to the Board if you're okay with doing that. I just think out of respect for the superintendent. Yeah, it's a separate vote. It's up to you, Madam President.
Madam Chair? Board Member Bledsoe, could you repeat the specific asking? Board Member Bledsoe is requesting to separate resolution item 11.0, which is the Board of Education. I'm sorry, 11.10. I'm going to play 11.11 in the picket. To extend the superintendent's contract. It was a discussion we had Tuesday evening. We all unanimously showed our support at our business meeting, but we're voting on it tonight at the actual board meeting. He's requesting to separate that item. You guys in favor of that? If not, we can just take it all as a package?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so we can separate 11.10. Ms. List?
Well, we have a motion that I understand now has been modified. Is that correct?
Amended.
Amended so that the motion is to approve action items 11.1 through 11.12, except for 11.10.
Yes.
Yes.
We'll have a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes. Yes, I will, yes, but I need to abstain from 11.9 due to conflict. No, 11.9.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve item 11.10.
Motion to approve 11.10.
Wait, 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 wait. Which item is this?
11.10. The one that we separated.
I actually separated because I wanted to motion it.
We're doing a separate motion on 11.10.
Motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Bledsoe, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Haynes? Any discussion?
Yes. And so again, just to reiterate, I spoke of this at the business meeting last Tuesday. Due to a conflict, I am not able to vote on this, but I definitely want to share my sentiments of, I'm happy that our superintendent is leading the Newark Board of Education, our parents, our students, and our educators. And so, thank you again for your service.
Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton, I understand you're abstaining?
Abstaining.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's fine. And talking to Madam President, I actually asked to separate it because Ms. Norton's abstaining. For the record.
Next, we need a motion to approve items under the heading 12.0 Program and Instruction.
Motion.
That is items 12.1 through 12.4. Ms. Norton made a motion? Wait. Ms. Murray Thomas? And Ms. Norton, second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on program and instruction items?
I just, I'm asking for clarity on the MOU with the Newark Public Library.
Thank you, Board Member Bledsoe. Would you specify exactly what question you have as regards to the MOU?
Can you explain it? I'm not familiar with it.
So as we discussed in the business meeting last week, one of the privileges, I would say, of my own childhood, growing up here in Newark, is my ability to be able to go to the library, to apply for colleges, to check out books, things of that nature. Superintendent and the district is under the agreement and belief that every kid should have that same level of access to our public institutions. And so with this MOU, with the Newark Public Library, and Deputy Assistant Superintendent Johnson, I'll allow you to elaborate as well. We not only will allow every child in the district the ability to get a library card from their respective branches in the Newark Public Library, but also to take full access, both of digital and non-digital resources within our libraries and fully integrate that within the district. But if you have any other questions, I'll defer to Ms. Deputy Superintendent Johnson to elaborate as well.
That's fine. I just would like to know, and this is for the superintendent and Madam Chair, since Dr. Fitzhugh left the district to become the Superintendent Orange, there is an exo-official member to the Board of Trustees for the library. Superintendent, could you name his replacement to that board?
Yes, that would be obviously the deputy superintendent.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, one of the things that we did historically in the past was provide an extended classroom experience, one during like each marking period. So having children who are in the third grade visiting their library, getting their library card, is something that will always now be a part of our academic programming in the school for a third grader. Because obviously, fourth graders, fifth graders, and above are not experiencing third grade again. The MOU with the Newark Public Library will be to issue every single one of our students a library card. So the idea is to address the students that are impacted, but also understand that there are other grades that may have not had that experience and are also impacted. And so part of our strategy with this MOU is to make sure that all of the students, regardless of third grade, are actually receiving a library card.
Any other questions? We'll have a roll call on items 12.1 through 12.4. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Superintendent, it's your turn.
Madam Chair?
Board Member Norton?
Yes, I just want to let, can I close this door? It's a lot of noise coming from in the hallway, and so I didn't want anyone to think I was closing it for any other reason, just so I can just hear better over there.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Superintendent?
Madam President?
Board Member Bledsoe?
Just really quickly, I know that last week we had the updated academic school year's calendar. Where's the vote tonight to make for the changes? If I'm not mistaken, two changes to the calendar? The academic calendar, school year calendar? I may be mistaken. Are there any changes to the calendar?
We didn't make changes, it was just enclosed in our packets for an FYI. It had the locations, the times.
Okay.
Ms. Deering, did we amend that? Did we amend the calendar? No.
Not the board calendar?
It was just an FYI enclosed in the folders.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Any other question, board members? Thank you, Superintendent Leon, Superintendent, report.
Madam President, members of the Board, and everyone who's here in attendance, obviously welcome back to what will in fact be an absolutely incredible academic year. Today's the day that all of the staff members are actually back at work from vacation, and we in fact hosted, not for the first time, because it was actually done in 2008 and '09 during that academic year by Dr. Janey, but obviously a district staff convocation for our second year. The first one under my administration obviously began last summer. And we shared a lot of very important information with the entire staff. Imagine 6,300 staff members strong. Every department, every office, every employee, whether you were a member of the instructional team, being principal, a vice principal, department chairperson in the high schools, or other instructional staff members, as well as our security guards, custodial workers, trade staff, the entire organization, from food services to directors of content areas in the Office of Teaching and Learning. Part of the challenge that we in fact have is that we are reorganizing the school system and just poised and ready for incredible opportunities on behalf of children. There are a couple of things that we began last year that I just want to take the opportunity to highlight. The Give Me Five campaign was an assignment that I gave all of our employees. I assigned five students to every staff member, regardless of their title, regardless of where they were working, and assigned five students to them. The five students that were assigned to them, the task was to convey to the parent of that child the importance of when was the first day of school, why did they need to be to school on time. And it worked out very, very well. And we will obviously continue that during this school year. Communications will be either going out to staff either this evening or tomorrow morning. One of the other things that we did was to kind of impress upon everyone the importance and role of central office. If the child is the most significant heartbeat in a classroom, and I believe that that is what a child actually is in our schools, then everyone who's closest to that child's heartbeat is extremely important in the work. Central office are in fact the arteries and veins between the district and that child. And so our responsibility in central office is to make sure that we only do what an artery does, which is bring good, good things to the school, as well as what a vein does, which is takes dirty blood away from the school. Part of the job of central office is to assist and support schools. And so on the first day, first days of school, many people won't be in this building because they'll be assigned to schools to provide assistance and support where in fact the children are. Newark Enrolls is in fact an enrollment initiative that we have in this district where students and their parents, on their behalf, apply to schools where they would like their children to attend. The enrollment process occurs later into the year, and around springtime, parents get notifications as to what schools their children have in fact finally been matched to. What we've done extremely different this year is that this building is known to be the Office of the Family Support, or a department called Family Support Center. That is not, that actual office won't exist here. Part of our strategy is to provide parents with the opportunity to get issues that are extremely important to them as it relates to enrollment resolved as close to their house as possible. So if in fact you're a parent and you would like your child and you live on Hawthorne Avenue, and you are a block away from Hawthorne Avenue School, we don't want you to catch two buses to get here to downtown to be told, yes, you can go to Hawthorne Avenue School. We want a parent who lives close to that school, as in the example, to be able to walk to Hawthorne Avenue School. And if they want to go to that school, we have provided access to every clerk in every single school so that they will be able to actually see if there's an available seat in their school and actually enroll them and register them all at the same time. We think that that makes the most sense, and ultimately, providing that opportunity to our parents is something that appears to be a shock to a whole lot of people because we've lived in what I would argue would be something that is not normal. So parents who are as old as I am will in fact remember, or actually, parents that are older than I am won't have children in schools. So parents who are, of our parents today will know that when you enrolled in school, you went to the school that was closest to your house. What's different today from then is that we actually allow students to attend any school that they would want to attend, regardless of their address. That's what's completely different. So let's say I live a block away from Hawthorne Avenue School, and I do not want to attend Hawthorne Avenue School. We still want that parent to go to Hawthorne Avenue School because that clerk will be able, because it's the school closest to their house, they'll be able to share with the parent what are all of the possible choices that they can actually have. And that school will be able to enroll that particular child in the school that they want, even though it's not the school where they are physically being serviced. And then all that that student would have to do with their parent is actually go register at the school of their choice. We think that that makes a whole lot of sense. We think that that makes a whole lot of sense, and we're extremely excited. Um, we've provided training for staff in June, training for staff during the course of the summer, and we understand just like in everything else, there'll be, uh, some work that needs to occur, and, um, we'll obviously continue to provide technical assistance and support to our schools. During the course of the summer, we took advantage of a number of opportunities. Historically, students who attend summer school did not perform well during the academic year. We do not believe that that is what summer school, it needs to be all about. Yes, it is true that if your student doesn't perform academically well during the school year, that we provide an opportunity for them to do well during the course of the summer. I think that that obviously makes sense. However, students are not failing during the year, and an opportunity during the summer is not being afforded to them. Well, that has obviously changed over the last couple of years, and in particular, it changed this summer. Ailey Camp, our students attended the Alvin Ailey Dance Camp during the course of the summer. It, they did well during the academic year, and instead of going to summer school because they failed, they actually went to summer school because they did well, that they did well during the school year. Our students across all of the elementary schools with teachers from our schools, as well as dancers from the Alvin Ailey, uh, Dance Company, um, provided an opportunity at Arts High School for our students. It was an absolutely incredible success, and, um, our students actually were able to perform at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center, distinguishing themselves. We also had 40 students from Shabazz Central Science and Technology High School, where they attended during the course of this summer, a, uh, college-level math course at NJIT. They were taught by college professors, some of their teachers received training as well, and ultimately, some of those teachers who received training were working with the college professors and these high school students as well. The students did so well, upon my visit, I was so impressed with the quality of work that they actually engaged in, that, um, I presented to this board at last week's, uh, meeting, actually, I presented this information to the board at the Program and Instruction Committee, and then the board voted, uh, last week to in fact approve this NJIT course for credit for our high school students. It's extremely important for everyone to understand that the students were taking this course because they thought it was good for them, so they would become a stronger student when they return back to high school next year. These are high school students on NJIT campus for weeks and hours during the course of the day, and they did this, and they did well, without believing that they were going to be assigned a grade. So I shared with the students that I was so impressed and proud of them, that I would present to the board for, uh, credit on their transcripts. The board voted unanimously to, uh, accept that recommendation, and in fact, that's what our students were doing. Yeah, I know. Yes, you should applaud that. I do understand that it is scary to know that high school students in Newark actually can be in college while they're in high school. I can understand that that may be something that appears to be not normal to certain people, but considering that I, uh, was born in the city, uh, went to schools in the city, still live in the city, was a teacher in the city, a proud principal, a distinguished principal in fact in the city, I know that when you challenge our students in Newark, they are capable of everything. And so to all of the students that are out there, and I know that you do watch, you have a specific email to me, if you actually would like to take advantage of this opportunity, all I need you to do is do well during your academic year, and then during the course of around the springtime, reach out to your guidance counselors so that they can actually schedule you for these incredible opportunities to attend summer courses that are going to help you not only do better in school, but it'll let you understand that no matter what appears to be impossible, that the fact that you live in Newark, you will prove to people that you can. We've conducted a comprehensive needs assessment in the district. I did that during the course of the entire year, and, um, we did it in every area, from academics to facilities to certifications. It's been very, very thorough. Uh, the work that, uh, the team that I actually, um, hired to do the facilities work is still even ongoing, and they're making sure that every, uh, facility in particular, as it relates to the work that we're doing in career and technical education, is, um, ramping up so that actually students could take advantage of these incredible spaces. Um, I see that one of the members of that, it's a two-person team, just so that you know that the Army is an army of two people. Um, Ms. Bennett, who was former principal of, um, Malcolm X Shabazz High School, and Dr. Ray Lindgren, who was executive assistant to Dr. Bolden when she was superintendent, these two former employees were also former Newark students who, um, know how important it is to make sure that not only academically our students are receiving the very, very best, but that in fact, um, that our facilities, uh, look consistent with what my expectations are. I'm proud of both of them for the work that they are still doing, uh, and in particular for the work that they did last year. Water. As those of you who have, um, been obviously paying close attention to the news, um, the city of Newark is actually, uh, addressing, um, a very serious issue as it relates to lead in the water. As it relates to the school district, as early as 2001, we had a responsibility to, um, address lead in our water, and it was re, um, visited in 2016, where, uh, the district created a remediation plan that was approved by the, uh, DEP, the Environmental Protection Agency. And so, uh, the plan that was written, that was approved, uh, provided a unique filter, uh, in all of our water supplies, uh, not only in our schools, but in every location, uh, where a student or staff member, um, was in. These filters are quite interesting, because as soon as they stop working, what they do is that they actually turn off the water supply. So if you're at a water fountain and the filter isn't working, there isn't any water that's going to come out. Um, that, there's a monitoring system that exists, and that, uh, we are confident as we get reports, as this is constantly being monitored, uh, that, um, any concerns that our parents have at their homes are not necessarily concerns that they should have as it relates to the water in our schools. But I highly recommend any parent, if in fact they want their children, um, to attend, uh, school with bottled waters, that they just need to make sure that those, uh, bottled waters are actually sealed before they actually arrive to school. But as it relates to drinking water in our school, they should feel very, very confident that they should do some. The water fountains are up and running. NPS Clarity 2020 is a, um, 10-year strategic plan, sorry, is a one-year strategic plan that is designed to actually do two things. First of all, it's designed to explain what has occurred over the last 23 years, and we're going to try and do that all in one year. In addition, it's going to set the foundation for the next strategic plan, which is a 10-year plan. Now, both are not what people know and do in most school districts. Most school districts, it's three years. There's a school district in Virginia that is doing six years. So usually, they don't do more than that, five, and they definitely don't do one. So I thought it was extremely important, given the fact that we're, um, in this transition from, um, state control, state operation to local control, that, um, we kind of assess what has in fact been learned over the last 23 years. The budget each year is a billion dollars. You figure that there are grant dollars that have a tendency to be about $20 million above that. So that's 23 billion and several hundred millions of dollars that have in fact gone into this school system. How are we doing? And the reality is that, uh, when I go into the student achievement data, there is a lot of work that we need to do, a lot of work that we need to do. Part of the other aspect of NPS Clarity 2020 is to in fact set a stage for the next decade, so that during 2020 to 2030, we actually establish and provide everyone in this community a new ecosystem that begins before children actually enter our schools. In our schools, students enter when they are three years old, and then after high school, they graduate. That's a little different to some people, like to me, when I was in kindergarten, it started at age five, and obviously, high school at the end of senior year. Because of the Abbott versus Burke decision, um, the, uh, pre-kindergarten program becomes mandatory in certain school districts. It's mandatory here in the city of Newark, so any parent who has a three- or four-year-old is highly recommended to make sure that that child is registered in school. So for the last number of years, we've been providing preschool access to our students. That's what NPS Clarity 2020 says is not enough, that the work has to begin from conception to cradle. So that means any mom, um, any dad who's having a child, uh, that the work begins when that baby is in the womb, that it is about, um, nutrition, it is about being healthy, it is about how to prepare so that when that baby is born, that you can be the best possible parent for that child. It's about parenting skills, it's about working really, really hard prior to their arrival to let them know that they are ready for some very loving parents, to not only hold, but to actually worry about in the years before they actually arrive in our schools. And then when they go through this new ecosystem and they graduate from high school, it's from college to career. So conception of cradle, college to career. We want to make sure that every se, every senior, when they graduate from high school, has been assigned a mentor. This doesn't exist today. Student is assigned a mentor, and upon graduation from high school, as soon as they land a career, because there'll be obviously opportunities that we're providing at the high schools, where a student would be able to actually graduate from high school and land a job, that once that student receives their first paycheck, the mentor has in fact completed their work. If in fact a student goes to college, that mentor will also go with them to college, not literally, but the whole idea that the mentor will be monitoring them while they're actually in college. So, assume that after four years of college, a student, um, wants to become a teacher, and soon as they land a contract being a teacher, that mentor has completed that task. This is something that we're extremely excited about. We believe that it will work, and we are poised that by 2020, we will have approximately 2,020, um, mentors, uh, that we will have incorporated into our strategy moving forward. So NPS Clarity 2020 looks like that. Every student in our school system, whether they are black or Latino, whether they're white, whatever is their actual origins, that we want to let them know that they're beautiful, that we want to let them know that they're smart, that we want to let them know that it is our responsibility in schools to provide an opportunity for our students that will afford a different reality for them and their parents. So, there are six priorities that have been outlined in the strategic plan. You can easily find the strategic plan in or on the district's webpage. There are 40 strategies along these six priorities, and there are 168 action items. Now, that's a lot of work. Uh, we only have a year to do it. So part of what we've already done is began this work last year, when we were actually implementing the strategic plan called the next three years. That is part of what we want to do in a strategic plan. The 10-year plan that's going to come, by the time we figure out what we did in the ninth year, might decide to change certain things. Well, I don't know about anybody here, but you may have decided to change a couple of things 10 minutes ago. You were going to do one thing, you decided to change it. Part of what our task is, is to write out a strategic plan and actually live the strategy, not, oh, we're going to think about something. Like for example, during the course of this year, all of these meetings I've had from thousands of people that I met with, that's not what we're doing this year. We're actually going to get to work. We're going to get to work, and we're going to do the work, and what we're going to do is make sure that we're implementing this strategic plan, and then monitoring how well we're doing it along the way. These are our three district campaigns, 100% because every day matters. We need every student in our schools every single day. Uh, the NJSLA is in fact the state standardized test. Passing is 750. We want to impress upon our students that we don't want them to pass the test, we want them to be, um, uh, we don't want them to just pass the test, we want them to do and perform higher than the test. Um, and we only want to strive for fours and fives. And then the last, um, campaign is that we are number one, and we are second to no one, that we will teach our students that whatever it is that they want to do, that they can be the very best at it. And, um, just so that we're clear, um, my football teams here in Newark have modeled it in fact the best. So we had all of our football teams at an incredible event that was sponsored by the Bronze Shields, as well as the New York Giants. And, uh, the end result of that conversation that I had with them, so can you imagine? All of our football teams, they sometimes compete against each other, and I said, all of them can be number one. This concept is quite difficult to understand. What we have to teach in our city is that competition is a very, very good thing, and you do not have to beat your sister in anything, but that you can share in the glory of each other's greatness. The attendance campaign, I already discussed that with you all, we have a home-to-school compact, so where the principal, the teacher, the parent, and the students will be required to sign, each school creates their own compact with regards to the relationship between the home and the school. This is very, very important as it relates to a lot of the work that we will do in how we redefine all of these relationships between both parents and staff. I created the Newark's Academic Challenge for Kids. This is an opportunity that we're providing our students, and that I expect them to meet them. So that's my job as superintendent, I'm supposed to establish a bar, they're supposed, principals and teachers are supposed to help the students meet the bar, and then my job as superintendent is to then raise the bar higher. And every time our students meet it, my job is to raise it higher. This challenge is quite interesting. There are academic as well as a number of social, um, factors that go into play. Here are what they are. I need my students to choose to care. Some of them have a real serious problem with that. They need to have a GPA of 2.5 or higher, they have to pass whatever is the state test, they have to be in school, they have to meet the graduation requirements, they have to sit for tests that are designed for students who are going to go to college. See, some of our students don't think that they're going to go to college, so they never take the test to go to college, so when they never get into college, because they never took the test to get into college, then they realize that they were never going to go to college. That is a cycle that makes absolutely no sense. What we will do is we will provide students with the opportunity to take tests that get them into college, that they will do well on those tests, and because they do well on those tests, they'll actually get into college. And when they get into college, they'll kind of go, oh, I was able to do it all along. Lunch applications, that's how we get money. I need every parent to fill out a lunch application. And I get it, back in the day, when I was in school, the way that the lunch application worked, your mom, like mine did, would put, okay, we're on welfare, here's our number, la di di, la di da, and then some lady in the main office started reading your business and started sharing that with everybody. And so people get embarrassed, because no one else was on welfare in the whole city, and so, you know, all of your business gets out there. Ultimately, what we need is every parent, regardless of their socioeconomic status, to fill out the lunch application, because the lunch application is what results in funds being provided to the school district, regardless of how much money your parents are in fact making. So we need all of our parents to fill out the lunch application. This is a process that must occur every year. Then, we need to actively have our students participate in school clubs, in anything that is being afforded to them, uh, at the school, as well as in sports. In addition to that, they have to attend all of these meetings that I schedule. So they have to attend my high school orientation week. Yesterday was seniors and juniors. Friday is freshmen and sophomores. Every student must go to high school before the first day of school. The first day of school is, uh, is Tuesday, September 3rd. Well, guess what? I need my students in high school before the first day. They have to know- They have to know what has been planned for them. The only way that they can know that is by actually being in high school before the first day of high school. What do I need them doing on the first day of high school? I need them in class. Going to class and learning from the teachers and meeting their friends and learning from them. I need parents to sign report cards of each of the marking periods. And then I need the discipline item clear. A discipline item is a way that I can access how your child is doing in school behaviorally. I need it clear. So watch this. Every high school class I have given this challenge to. So last year, I met with all of the seniors, all of the juniors, all of the freshmen and all of the sophomores. I met with two thousand five hundred students in each of those grades at the Prudential Arena. Then to make sure everyone in Newark understood that I wasn't playing, I met with all of the eighth graders. I met in three days with twelve thousand five hundred students. It is extremely important. Can somebody turn off their phone? Call the off button. So I met with twelve thousand five hundred students. And I challenged them. I reminded them of what we're supposed to do for them in school. And what they're supposed to do for their parents. Cause all that my mom has taught me is that what parents want are for their children to be better than what they were. And so in order to make that happen, I need to make sure that our students are aware of what their responsibilities are. Not to us, but to their homes. So. Freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors received this challenge. The seniors only had one year. I couldn't fairly access all of the information. For those of you who are unaware, but I've already reported this out at the June board meeting. We had approximately, there are twenty-four hundred seniors in the class of two thousand and nineteen. We had approximately two thousand of those students meet this challenge. Our little babies in Newark, you know what they did? Because they met the challenge, they didn't know what was gonna happen to them. But you know, sometimes kids don't do things unless they're gonna get something from him. So all I told them is they were gonna hang out with me for a day. Cause they obviously learned I was so cool. They hung out with me at Forest Lodge and we had the most incredible day possible. And they enjoyed themselves. Just to share with the general public, um. About ten different people. Was, uh, three students, about four or five, uh, teachers and one principal. Was like they didn't understand what happened at Forest Lodge. Zero arguments. Zero fights. Approximately two thousand of our babies from Newark that are seniors. Modeled for everyone what excellence looks like. So the freshmen received a harder challenge, cause I have them for four years. I'm the freshman superintendent, I have them for four years. So I wanted to make sure that their challenge was more difficult. So if you are, were a freshman last year or a sophomore now, your challenge is this. Every year, you're supposed to meet all of those conditions. And in June. If you've met those conditions and your parents or guardians are okay with it. They go to the treasurer of the school and they issue a two hundred dollar money order or cash in your name. And they do that every year. So that at the end of this year, if they in fact did everything that they were supposed to do. Then in June of twenty twenty, your parents will go to school and go to the treasurer, making sure you always get a receipt. And issue a money order or two hundred more dollars. And they are to do that every June until their senior year. Their senior year, they are to pay that two hundred, last two hundred dollars upfront. In January of the student's senior year. That's eight hundred dollars that I'm asking every parent or anyone who cares about any of these students. With the approval of their parent or guardian. I need you to pay two hundred dollars every year that your child meets all of those requirements. And what will happen as those students who are now sophomores learned last year. Is that when I was principal at, uh, Dr. Horton School and then principal at University High School, I challenged my student body. The students who met my expectation, they went and hung out with me for a week. At my second favorite, uh, place, which is, uh, Orlando, Florida. And so any sophomore who is attending our schools. If in fact, they have met last year's criteria and this year's criteria. Then junior year and senior year's criteria. That in June of their senior year, we're gonna go, we're gonna line up a whole bunch of charter buses. On, um, I ninety-five going south. And we'll spend about four or five days in Orlando. And perhaps maybe like two days in South Beach. So that our students can see, um, what happens when you're great. Cause when you great, you are great, great things happen to you. So this is just a reminder that that campaign is still, uh, in existence. All of our, it's Park High School who scored ninety percent on the literacy test. So we actually have schools that are beating the state's average. When we look at this, we're looking at all of the schools that are in our school district. And obviously, um, there is a lot of work that we need to do. As it relates to what schools are in fact growing. Uh, any of the green bubbles are schools that have demonstrated growth. And all of the red bubbles are, uh, schools that have demonstrated an, uh, a decrease. If you look closely, I'll see if I can read the slide from, um. My. So we have. Clemente Camden, Belmont Runyon, Hawkins Flag, South Seventeenth, Tubman, First Avenue Hawthorne, Mount Vernon, Hernandez, Salome, Renea, Oliver. Thirteenth Avenue, Wilson Ridge, Ivy Hill, Lincoln, Quipman, Avon Park. Spencer, Cleveland. And Chancellor. All of those schools demonstrated growth in the area of English Language Arts. From their previous year. As it relates to mathematics. That's English Language Arts, that's, uh, those are still the high schools, right? Alright, so thank you. So we have Week Wake Technology, Science, Bard, Central, Barringer, Arts and Shabazz. So those are the schools that are demonstrating growth. It's important to note that a school that's demonstrating growth is very difficult to do that when you are already at the top. So it's extremely important that everyone is aware of what the actual student achievement data is. So that you can actually assess if it's a negative impact in fact on the school's performance. In the area of. Mathematics. So as it relates to all grades and the elementary schools, we obviously see, uh, an increase at the secondary schools. You actually see a dip. And then the student achievement as it relates to each of the respective grades are listed. MAT O three, that's third graders in Newark. MAT O four obviously is fourth graders and it increases by grade. With at the high schools, Algebra One Geometry and Algebra Two being the course offerings. This is how we did in comparison to the state of New Jersey. The red line is obviously the state of New Jersey. The blue line is the city of Newark. When I say city of Newark, that is our schools. The schools that this board governs over, not all of the schools in the city of Newark. Cause this school district is not afraid to show what the student achievement of all its students are. Growth. And might I add? That there are schools that are in the city of Newark that are not governed by this board, that are doing extremely well. Um, but we would like to see it. Schools that have demonstrated growth in mathematics. Salome, Orenya, Clemente, Sussex, First Flag, Wilson, South Street, South Seventeenth, Park, Camden. Franklin, Oliver, Carver, Horton, Spencer, Hawkins Ridge, Hawthorne, Tubman, Belmont Runyon, McKinley. Chancellor and Abington. To the board, one of the things that I'm trying to share or show with you that the difference from. That the difference, thank you. That the difference from this morning's convocation is that I only shared what schools demonstrated a substantive gain. Meaning that it was statistically significant that something actually occurred there. That requires everyone's applause. And that's why everyone applauded. The information that I'm sharing with you now, as you can see, more schools did well. In contrast, as it relates to how did they grow? Um, we did not mention all of these schools today, um, but this clearly kinda is the explanation as to why. Um, these are the high schools. So we have, um. It's alright. You don't have to worry about recording it. I don't have a problem repeating what I have to say. We won't have any of that. I'm a different superintendent from other people. I don't have a problem speaking up. As it relates to the high schools. Week Wake Technology, no, these are English Language Arts, sorry. Uh, as it relates to the high schools in math, we have. Yeah, but I'm looking at, um. Math games. That's English Language Arts. I don't see that slide in this deck. No. So. Is that thirty-three? Alright, so you have Technology Bard, Barringer, Eagle and Shabazz demonstrating, um, their increases. Remember, this is growth, it's not, uh, proficiacy, it's extremely important to really know the difference in fact between the two. Um, how did our students do economically disadvantaged versus non-economically disadvantaged? So part of what our responsibility is, is to present, and I shared this information already with the board at their retreat on Saturday. Our responsibility in the state is to have every superintendent share, how did these different subgroups do? So as it relates to English Language Arts. The interesting thing. Is that the economically disadvantaged students, so these are students that are on. Free or reduced, uh, lunch, the importance of filling out the lunch application. When you don't fill out a lunch application, then you're non-economically disadvantaged. So when you are filling out a lunch application. And you're determined to receive free or reduced lunch, that then adds to the blue line. And so we're seeing right now that based on the information, regardless of the status. Uh, that a little less than one percentage point, point nine, uh, difference between the students in English Language Arts. In math, there is an obvious difference of a little, what, three point three, uh, percentage points. As it relates to general education students and special education students. We see that this gap is very, very large. With, um, not only in English Language Arts, the gap in math is smaller than the gap in the English Language Arts. Yet there's still a gap in both. One of the things that we'll actually, uh, be doing is focusing on, um. Different special education programs during the course of this year. The executive director and I will actually be mapping out the entire year to actually create different types of programs. And then announce in the spring, what will be the opportunities that students will be able to take advantage the following school year. That doesn't mean that we're not obviously doing any work during the course of this school year. We're actually trying to do both and. And make sure that we're improving what the students are receiving now. And then obviously creating a better experience for them the following year. ELL students and non-ELL students. So English language learners are students where English is not their, uh, primary language. Uh, as some of you may or may not be aware, regardless of the status, your students are in fact, if they meet the criteria, required to sit. Uh, for both the English Language Arts and mathematics test. Obviously with the understanding that there's also accommodations. In the area of English Language Arts, the split is large. And obviously in comparison to the math where the gap seems to be not as wide. I did a comparison between our female students and our male students. Interestingly enough. We didn't need this report to let me know that women are smarter than men. Where would we be without you ladies? However, to be. To be two times smarter than us is a lot. The important contrast is if you look at the math scores. The math scores indicate that the ladies in our schools or all of our female students. Whether they're in the primary grades or in high school, that they are in fact doing better in literacy than in math. And the difference between forty-one percent passing English Language Arts to twenty-five percent passing in mathematics. Is something that requires or will require us to pay close concerted effort at addressing. As it relates to all of the other, um, races. Um, this is a very busy chart. However, um, it's extremely important to focus at the bottom, cause that's where we are. Um, students who are black and students who are Latino are in fact, um, leading the bottom. Of our, uh, student body in English Language Arts. And the exact same truth is occurring in mathematics. So we actually need to do something very intentional to actually change these numbers. We need to provide books where our students see themselves in. Uh, we need to make sure that there's a curriculum worthy of our teachers' teaching and our students' learning. We have a new math series and literacy series. See what happened, ladies and gentlemen, over the last seven years, principals were allowed to. Have this thing called autonomy, where they were able to kind of pick whatever they wanted to pick. They wanted to pick this book, that's okay. They wanted to pick that book, that's okay. They wanted to switch books, that's okay. They wanted to do one book one year, change it, do another one the next year, then change it, do another one the next year. See, you're not gonna play with our students in this administration. What we're doing is we're picking a book. We're making sure that we have a committee of folks that are very concerned about the education of our children. And they in fact make recommendations to me as to what in fact I present to the board for adoption. That occurs in committee. The board gets an opportunity to ask questions. And then we not only approve it, that we actually create a rollout plan for it. So teachers have been working throughout the whole course of this summer. Um, during the next couple of days, they will be receiving training in the new series. Um, there's a lot of work that teachers need to actually do before our students arrive on the third of September. But I have nothing but great confidence, given the conversation that I led today, that we are on our right track to kind of course correct a whole lot of things. A whole lot of things. Last area should be of great concern to everyone. And this is a comparison of our, uh, black males to all other males. When I did this report last year, uh, my brother's keeper, uh, reached out to me. Very, very concerned about how and what I was going to do strategically to address this issue. And, um. You know. The job of schools is not to create a pipeline. To a facility that was never intended to rehabilitate students or to even come close to educating them properly. This school system is not designed to create children who do not graduate from our schools. And then kind of mess up my streets. Cause I actually have to walk them. And ultimately, what we need to do is address this issue very intently. I am proud to actually report out that in fact, when we remove a certain type of student from these lines. And that is a student with an IEP. That is black or other males that have an IEP. The black male students are competing in English Language Arts closer with their counterparts than in math. This suggests that our black male students are being classified more than all of their counterparts. See, what we can't have is a teacher who is afraid of what a child looks like. And then we can't help them by having somebody classify them so somebody else can help them. So there's a lot of work that has to go, I'm not blaming teachers only. But ultimately, in the end, if we're gonna aggressively address this issue. Of how our males are going to be educated better, then we actually need to provide people in front of them that can do that. And let me be clear. I am not suggesting that if in fact, we have a, a group of, uh. Hawaiian students. That the only person who can educate. that the only person who can educate them is a Hawaiian teacher. So I'm not saying that I believe that that's true. In the city of Newark in particular, I know that the children of our city do not see color first. They actually see heart first. So we need teachers in front of all of our students who care about our children. Because when children do not see a teacher who cares about them, because the teacher does not bring hearts to the classroom, then our children see color. Madam President, that ends my report.
Madam President.
Board Member Norton.
Yes, thank you so much, um, Superintendent, for your report. I have some questions in regards to, um, early in the presentation. So first, I would like to thank, um, Madam Chair Garcia and Superintendent for repeating the importance of filling out the lunch application. Um, as Chair of the Finance Committee, definitely getting a very clear, um, understanding of what happens when the, uh, application is not filled out. Um, I do, I am aware that there is a, a dollar amount, uh, attached to when that application is not filled out. And it's not only for individuals who receive free or reduced lunch, but, but also people who are paid. And so, can we get a rough estimate, um, Superintendent or Madam BA? When that lunch application is not filled out, what is the cost, um, that could, how much is that affecting our district and our budget?
Yeah, so I think that the question is, um, absolutely incredible. What our parents need to understand is that filling out that application is probably one of the most important acts that we need the parents of all of our students to actually do. It's one of many.
Mm-hmm.
Because no one's saying that being a parent is going to be easy just because you fill out the lunch application. We know that it's a little bit more complicated than that.
Yes.
Ultimately, um, what I wanted to do in answering this question is I wanted to add another subject to it. So, um, the School Business Administrator, in, um, getting to the issue of the implications. I think I also see Dr. McGill here, she just stepped out. Um, so I know the, that the School Business Administrator will address item one, but I wanted to throw a second item, and that is to ask the School Business Administrator to speak to what happens with SEMI, so that parents can actually understand that being on Medicaid actually can also help the district financially.
Can I add another point to that as well? And so also, I remember, uh, the Executive Director of Federal Programs and Grants, Ms. Chavez. She also mentioned that the applications that we receive, the lunch applications that we receive, also plays a role in other grants that the district may qualify. And so, just because these are dollar amounts, as a district of our size, we're always looking for money, um, to put back in our classrooms and to our students, our teachers, et cetera. And so, just to hone in on the importance of how filling out this one sheet of paper um, can go a long way in bringing dollars to the district.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Leon, and members of the community. Ms. Norton, thank you for your questions. Um, let me see if I can go down them, and then if I miss something, let me know.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the lunch application, lunch applications are used, uh, by the federal government to determine a district's financial standing, for want of a better term. So, the lunch application, one, allows children to be able to participate in the breakfast and lunch program, which is a national federally subsidized program. Every child that eats in the district and has a lunch application, there is a sum of money that comes to the district as reimbursement for the meals that the children get. Now in Newark, all of our children eat both breakfast and lunch for free. But when we do our counts of how many children participate, we need to identify them based on their lunch application status. So number one, it is extremely important, because it brings funding to the Food and Nutrition Services Department to make it self-sufficient. This school year that just closed, that department had a two-point-five-million-dollar deficit, which means monies are coming out of the academic programs to support the food services program, and that is not the way it should be. That program should be self-sufficient. So if every child, and we have about five thousand lunch applications that are not completed every year. So it doesn't matter whether your child is pay, is free, reduced, or paid. There's money for each of those categories. Free is three dollars and forty-eight cents, which must cover everything for the meal. Labor, food, milk, bread, uh, paper supplies, utilities. Many of you who do, uh, cooking at home, think how you could provide one meal for three dollars and forty-eight cents that provides protein, eight fluid ounces of milk, three-quarter fruit and/or vegetable. Okay? It goes down to three oh eight for a reduced-price meal, and I think it's somewhere around the twenty-nine cents, if I'm not mistaken.
Thirty-nine cents.
Thirty-nine for a paid meal. But every penny counts. The more self-sufficient they are, the less goes from the academic program. Now let's talk about the other funding that's tied to the lunch application. Every single source of federal funding that the district gets is determined by the lunch eligibility status. Title one, we are an all-district title one because we complete lunch applications. Think what those additional five thousand applications, even if they were all only paid, could do. For a hundred and eighty days, two meals a day. It's three sixty meals for the year, times thirty, what, thirty-nine cents? I'm not going to do the math in my head, but it adds up, right? So every penny counts. So title one, school improvement grants, SIG, are determined by lunch applications. Any other grant that we qualify for, whether they be discretionary, or they be, and there are not many, uh, discretionary, non-discretionary grants out there anymore. Title, IDEA, all of them, bring money to the district based on the lunch application. It is estimated that a lunch application brings in approximately five thousand dollars in federal funding per child. Oh, I forgot one, E-Rate. You know that tariff you pay on your phone bill? That tariff is collected and has provided this district in excess of four million dollars per year for the last fifteen years to contribute to technology in the classroom. If you spend a dollar for technology, and our free and reduced rate is eighty percent or above, that tariff pays the eighty percent or above. So the higher your free and reduce, the less the district has to spend of that dollar. In our case, most times we're spending eighty, they're spending eighty-two percent, and for every dollar we spend, the difference is made up by the district. That's significant dollars, you know, smart boards, Chromebooks, right? Smart panels, what else you have in the schools, laptops, uh, iPads. All of that technology is purchased through E-Rate. So that tells you where the lunch application takes you. Superintendent asked me to talk about, did I answer all of your questions, Ms. Norton?
Yes, I have more, but yes.
The Superintendent asked me to speak about SEMI, which is Special Ed Medication, Medicaid Initiative. And Ms. Granado's office, um, really helps with that. The district is able to claim for every student who requires special services, whether it be speech, whether it be physical therapy, whether it be counseling, whether it be ambulance, ambulance services to school, because we have some children who come in ambulances, um, whether it's nursing care, all of those categories, as long as they are provided by a professional, licensed professional individual, and they are provided during the school day, those services we can be paid or reimbursed for. Last year, our reimbursement was what, Carolyn, do you remember? Two point two, and our target was what, one point? One point nine.
Millions, correct?
Right, I'm sorry, million, yes. Um, the district has given a target in its budget. If we surpass the target, we are able to collect additional monies. These are services we've already paid for, so it's a reimbursement to the district. It also allows students to get those services during the school day. What's important here is the parental consent. How many people have heard about that? Y'all sleeping? Parental consent. It means that you allow the district to claim for the services that it has provided your child during the school day. I see some of us are cynical and skeptical. It's not money extra, it's reimbursement for money the district already spent. And that money can be reallocated somewhere else. So it is extremely important, and I must note that the district has surpassed its target for the last four to five years, and significantly surpassed that target. So when we talk about revenue coming in and being able to allocate our resources and our revenue, these are the things that are extremely important. Superintendent?
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton.
Thank you so much, Superintendent and Madam BA, for that explanation. And so, just for the public to know, is there a timeframe for the applications to be filled out?
Applications are done on an annual basis. Um, we do applications all the time, year-long, but they are critical because in, um, September, we start our new school year. Applications become available on the first of July. We now do our applications electronically, we also do them as a family. All of those things help us to get all of the children that are in the district. So, how the government works is that in September, when you open school, you take the eligibility of the child from June, and you use that for the month of September. On September thirtieth, automatically, we have to change over to the New Year's eligibility. So if a child may have been free in June, and they don't fill out an application in September, on October first, they become denied. That's what happens, they become denied, and they're now someone who should be paying for lunch. So the reimbursement rate drops, and in districts where children have to pay for meals, then they're told, you must pay full price for a meal. And that's what happens. That eligibility is used all year long. Should there be a change in family status of any kind, whether it's job loss, um, loss of a parent, anything that changes the family's status, the individuals need to come in and redo your lunch application, because your status may change. Your husband or your wife may be laid off, it may be a temporary layoff, but it can change you from a reduced or a paid meal to a free meal, which doesn't matter necessarily to individuals on the lunch line, but it matters in the amount of aid that we receive. Our state aid is determined based on lunch applications. If you are a free child, I think the factor is one point three or something like that. And if you're reduced, and if you're paid, it's another factor, which goes lower. So once again, all state aid we receive, all federal aid we receive, SEMI, Medicare, uh, initiative, and just about any other grant we want to talk about, or any funding source other than private, is determined based on economic status, determined by the lunch application.
Thank you, Madam BA.
Um, any other question, board members?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton, then Board Member Mary Thomas.
Yes, um, and so since I was, as, uh, the district is looking to open our schools, uh, come September, potentially using our attendance counselors to help facilitate in getting those lunch applications filled out in the month of September, uh, as a potential additional resource for the district to use. Um, and then also something on another note, in terms of Superintendent, for the SAT and ACT, is the district providing, uh, funding? Well, is the district, uh, paying for students to take those exams? And does that also qualify juniors and seniors?
Great, so let's start with the first one. So as it relates to lunch applications, this is what we've done in this school district. We had this position called Community Engagement Specialist, and we said, hi, you, this employee, you go to the parents and get it. And the parents are like, who, who are you? Why am I going to give you my information about this? Why are you trying to help me do this? We've gotten this lunch application thing wrong all the time. So, back in the day when I was young, we used to have these people called homeroom teacher. And so, the homeroom teacher is the one who's supposed to make contact directly with the parent and be the person. And it's not that people disrespect people who aren't teachers, but the parents are like, well, who's going to worry more about my child than their teacher? So, our strategy is not to give the lunch applications to anybody else. That's kind of some of the mumbo jumbo that we're still doing right now, that part of what we have to do is put it in the homeroom teacher's responsibilities to make sure that all of their students have it done. The attendance counselor can help, the new parent liaison position can help. That strategy is right, but making them be responsible for getting it, that hasn't worked. As it relates to.
Just to clarify, I wasn't saying to make them responsible, but to just.
Yeah, but that's what we've done, I hear you, but that's what we've done here. We've, we've told the Community Engagement Specialist, hey, you have meetings with the parents, and you tell the parents to do the lunch application. Yeah, okay, it didn't work, you know why? Because it wasn't ever going to work. So, principals need to be on top of it, because that's what determines money that gets into their schools, and the classroom teacher needs to be on top of it, because they have to worry about getting the monies so that they can actually get supplies in their classrooms. As ASATs, uh, our students have waivers, uh, for them, so that's a good thing. They need to actually use the waivers when they get the waivers. And, um, I believe that there's just a certain constraint as to how many times you actually get a waiver, so I do believe you can get them as, as early as your junior year. I didn't mention this before, but the PSAT is something that, when I was Assistant Superintendent of the High Schools, I required all students seven through eleven to take that test. Uh, today, based on conversations with the College Board, the correct age to begin the test is in eighth grade through eleventh. The PSAT is in fact the test that determines, in your junior year in high school, um, your actual abilities to get all of these college scholarships. So, what usually happens is that parents who maybe live in a more affluent school district will require, because they have to pay for it, um, the opportunity to take this test years before it counts. See, it only counts junior year, but they take it sophomore year, and they might even take it freshman year. So that the student, it becomes a little bit familiar, it's not the same test, but the format is the same, and then the student kind of gets a little stressed about it, but they do it several times, so their stress kind of maybe appears to be, uh, somewhat normal. So what we're doing is we're going to pay it for the parents, they don't have to pay it at all. They don't have to pay for the eleventh grade test, they don't have to pay the tenth grade, or the ninth grade, or the eighth grade. The thing that we will do differently for eighth grade is we're not going to administer it to all of the students. We're going to create a criteria that determines who qualifies for it, and those are the students who will actually take the test. The date of the test will obviously be on the web, it is like the second week of October. Uh, is Ms. Jackson here? Okay, and when she comes back in, if she could just remind me when's the date, because it's already set.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Board Member Mary Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for that lovely and robust report. Um, as we all know, behind all these numbers, there's a lot of people. As we all know, behind all these numbers is a lot of people putting a lot of work from our parents, our educators, our staff members too, you know, our board and our district staff. So I salute everyone for making these numbers and gains that we made possible. My question is... More so about the gains that have been made outside of the numbers. As we know, standardized tests capture a lot. They capture a lot of growth. They capture increased student performance. But there are some indicators that aren't captured in the numbers. And so, Superintendent, could you speak to some other ways in which we can show how our students have made significant progress in the areas of social and emotional learning, grit, everything down to, you know, their ability to just kind of navigate trauma? Can we identify other ways in which we've seen gains and improvement, both in the climate and culture, and then some of the SEL indicators that also indicate success aside from academic gains this year?
Turn on the microphone. We know today that mental health is real. It's real. And so we know that the students are impacted in profound ways. Perhaps, you know, it's just been time, and so, things that were easily resolved by us when we were much younger are not what are realized by our children today. But I always tell my students that they've passed the hardest test of all. It's not the state test. It's not the SATs. It's not even a spelling test in their classroom. They passed the test of living in Newark, New Jersey. Being able to pass that test should reassure our students that no other test is going to be harder than that. All that we have to have is our students confident that we will have principals who will lead, teachers who care, parents who love, and students who learn. And that's the compact that we are making between the school and the home, that in fact, it's everybody's responsibility to teach our students that your point is extremely important one to make. Those were just numbers, not to me. I know all of those babies that were there represented by a number. There's a face to every name that was there. And what we have to teach our teachers is to know them by their name, to know where they live, to know what their circumstances are, not to provide people with excuses. That is not what we do in school. So we will have students that our teachers will encounter who have single moms, who single moms are on welfare, who single moms on welfare don't speak English. Well, guess what? You better educate that child very well because that child could be like this superintendent, eventually become the superintendent of schools because that's what my reality was. As it relates to specifically, how do you measure it? You know, ultimately, there are different strategies on how to assess what the needs of our students are, right? Ultimately, what we, our students need are the resources and opportunities so that they can actually explain to us why they're not coming to school. On one side, Westside High School, you know, the new principal there, he's in his second year. When he was a vice principal, he was asking students, "Hey, you know, why are you not coming to school?" And one of the reasons where students weren't coming to school was because there was some bullying situation about what people were wearing in their school and the fact that the school wasn't, that their clothes wasn't clean. So what did he do? He said, "Oh, wow, that's a serious problem." And continue to have students absent from school? Not at all. He thought of an incredible strategy, which is an incredible strategy that has already been used in the district. So it's not new to us. The whole idea of what he's providing his students and the monies that he has garnered, there is no principal as far back as I can remember who has gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars on his own for the students at that school. And guess what? When you look at his attendance, his attendance went up. So ultimately, he would argue that there's a lot of work that needs to occur at Westside High School for that student to be of distinction. But we're definitely on the right path. So I'm not saying that you always need to have hired an employee to solve the problem, but we do need people who are experts. Experts that are going to provide and address some of these SEL needs that our students are demonstrating. And without classifying our students. So there is an IRRS process that Ms. Ortiz, the new executive director of the Office of Student Life, will actually be monitoring. And that's something that she will do closely, hand in hand, with the Executive Director of Special Education. So part of what my job is, is to create a system that addresses and tries to solve some of our most difficult problems. So I have an at-risk report that I usually used to give my high school principals when I was Assistant Superintendent, that begins to chart out who the bodies are. Who's this kid? What's their name? And then create an individualized plan for that child with social workers, now with attendance counselors. So the whole idea that Ms. Norton was talking about comes into play there. That's what we need the attendance counselor doing. Too often, we have our really good employees doing something else and not their job. So I want the attendance counselor actually counseling students. I want the social worker providing the social services. Are there programs that the students need to engage in? Those are the things that our support staff has to be involved in. And you don't get a grade for that. You know, it doesn't... It may be one of the reasons why the student achievement isn't as high. But you know what? I'm not going to toss it there. I really believe that one of the reasons why our student achievement isn't as high as it needs to be is because of the type of tools our teachers have been using. I think that the, I think that the English books and the math books and whatever this mumbo jumbo nonsense we've allowed the principals to do at their schools, I think that that's the culprit. And we've just figured out the cure. Our Office of Teaching and Learning will actually create curriculum with the assistance of our incredible teaching staff members. Initiatives that we have already started since last year, as a result, will begin to provide the very, very best resources in modeling for our teachers with some of the stellar staff that I've hired as part of my central office team. So it's about reallocating the resources that we have. I'm not trying to belittle or downgrade the mental health issues. I know that they're real. Ultimately, it has to be a balance. But we can't do a balance where we're not actually addressing what is a primary concern. The other piece that I think is extremely important, it's all on the academic side, is that we've spent a lot of money providing schools with intervention strategies. Instead of actually spending the resources, we're providing them a product worthy of our students. And ultimately, we have allowed a crutch to impede our abilities to actually teach. So our strategy this year is to utilize a textbook that we have confidence in, a curriculum that lets everyone know that the students, as well as the teaching staff members, are tools in the task, and ultimately focus on what needs to occur on the academic end. There are too many people out there that are experts at teaching kids. And there are too many people out there who are experts at helping students provide social emotional learning or addressing social emotional learning needs. And what I notice is that we give them a lot of our money, and I don't see any results. So what am I good at? I'm an awesome mathematics teacher, and I know how to teach. And I know how to create systems in place. And I know how to remove principals who can't get it done. And I know how to make sure teachers who can't teach go do something else. And I know that students don't run the show, they are the show. And ultimately, in the end, that what our parents want is for our students to just be better. And so, the challenge that we have is a serious one because I'm in the middle of a system that has to be reorganized to accomplish its goals. The issue that you're raising is one that I am clear that today I see differently than if we would have had this conversation 10 years ago. 10 years ago, I would have been like, "Go to class." Right now, students are like, "Here's a gun." That they suffer this incredible wound of being a child in Newark, where we've asked children to grow up, and we should not be putting that on them at all.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Madam Chair? Any other question, board members?
Madam Chair?
Board Member Hill?
Superintendent, I was just curious about, do, did we have any of our freshmen that submitted the $200 at the end of the school year?
That's a great question. I am, what I am going to do during the course of this year, I believe it's like the second week of September, is I'm going to call for a meeting of the classes. So it'll be 2,500 or so students and just me. All of them and me. And I talk to them all at one time. They're sitting by their schools. And part of what I want to do, so I, so the answer is, I have no idea. But ultimately, what I'm going to do is have that meeting again with them. Because what I would like to know is how many principals met with their parents of those students last year to tell them about this? Because if I have to go tell every student at every high school that, "Hey, the superintendent thought of this really great idea that you might be confused by," because let me tell you, telling a parent, "Give me $200 because your child does something good," might sound kind of weird to a parent. Understand? So if we don't have principals who do that, I'll go do it for them, and then I'll find myself another principal.
So just to make a recommendation...
I want to, I want to report out what that number is. Let's say by... I want to report that number out, let's say by October.
So just to make the little recommendation, because me, myself, I have a freshman student entering into his sophomore year. And just so that it wouldn't be such a financial hardship on parents if they want to participate in that, maybe at the first marking period, you get 50, the second marking period, another 50, third. So you do installments?
So, obviously, that's, actually, that's a real great recommendation. So part of what we want to explain to the students is that it had to be paid by June, right? So they can actually put the installments like that. They don't even have to wait for the marking period, although that's an easy way to remember, and I appreciate the recommendation. But, you know, sometimes the parents are working check by check. So, you know, whenever they have that money...
Madam Chair?
Board Member Norton, then we will be moving on to public participation.
Thank you. This is just a logistical. So Superintendent mentioned the start times for the high schools, elementary schools, and JFK. What are the end times?
Actually, I didn't mention any of that. The board president...
Oh, I apologize, board president.
So at the elementary schools, it is... Let me see somebody's head raised. I see everybody's head down. Hello? 2:55 at the elementary level. Yeah, it's 8:25 to 2:55 at the elementary level.
That's high school.
8:25 to 2:55 is elementary schools. And the high schools is 8:15 to, what time? 2:40? 2:40.
Thank you.
Now we have the public participation portion of the meeting. Public participation at board meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public to address the board on issues of public concern and not intended as a forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with board members or district officials. The board president, superintendent, or designee may respond to questions either at the end of the session or at a later time. It shall be the responsibility of the board president to maintain order and efficient process during public participation at board meetings, especially so that the full-time allotment for public comment is given over to speakers from the public. Public participation at a board public meeting will be limited to 90 minutes. This time allotment may be extended for an additional 15 minutes by the board president at her discretion. All speakers, regardless of whether he or she represents an organization, will be allotted no more than three minutes for comment unless an exception applies. Time limits for all speakers will be adhered to. There will be no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. All speakers will be required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one hour and 30 minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that will not be permitted include, but are not limited to, naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, racial slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meeting or inciting others to do so. The superintendent or board president may interrupt any speaker or terminate any individual's speaking privilege if the speaker's comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and that the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or bantering the board president or district officials, repetitive or truculent speech, or other disregard for the rules of decorum will not be tolerated and may subject the individual or group to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the board meeting will be adjourned.
Vice Chair Haynes?
Because I need to. Why not? Okay. Public participation? Yes. So for the record, I will be leaving now. But I just wanted to make it very clear that I'm not one of those people that live in chaos. And if I said something once... My moral compass isn't measured by anyone, and I fight a good fight and assist in every way possible to accomplish the best results for the city of Newark. To be screenshot negativity, don't send it to me because I swear by Allah, I'm not, I don't care about it. We have too much work to do for me to get distracted with nonsense. I bust my honey to ensure that our children are comfortable enough to learn in the building, and that said buildings are clean and well-prepared to educate our children. I am on school, I am a public school parent, which is a special interest to me. Hence why I do everything I possibly can to prepare my children for the future, and I teach them right from wrong and how to talk to people and not be disrespectful and vulgar. I am on the Newark Anti-Violence Coalition, where we do violence prevention and trauma-informed care. My brothers and sisters who receive this type of help from me don't get blasted on social media because that's unnecessary. I do what I do to please Allah and motivate the sisters that's in my community that look like me, think like me, and sometimes don't see the light at the end of the tunnel. To have my name dragged by anyone is very interesting. But dig this, if you're not here to help, you don't have to be banned. You can leave. You're embarrassing this district yourself, and I said what I said.
First speaker, Vicki Ploudon Fitzpatrick. Good evening, Ms. Ploudon Fitzpatrick. Could you just say your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vicki Ploudon Fitzpatrick. My address is 717 South 18th Street, Newark, New Jersey.
You may begin.
Okay, hi. I'm, good evening, board members, and also Superintendent Roger Leon. I'm here to address the process of the hiring practice. I was born and raised in the city of Newark, a longtime homeowner. I was educated in the public school system also. Oh, you can't hear me? Okay, well, I'll start over again. I was mentioning that I was born and raised in the city of Newark, and I'm presently a homeowner. I was educated in the public school, just like many of you. And my concern here is the hiring practice and the order process. I have been applying for, I've been a school nurse's aide for 19 years. I went back to school to receive my bachelor's in psychology in 2017. Then I went back to receive my master's in May of 2019. I have applied for several positions and have not received not one interview. Now, that wasn't in particular about which job, but I just wanted a different job. I think I earned it. I went back to school and got educated and was able to deliver the services that was needed. So the experience that they're probably looking for, I did not get from being the school nurse's aide, but I got my experience on the outside doing different jobs. In fact, the employees, some of the employees that I, that got hired, say, for instance, as attendance counselors, they were not even employed by the Newark Public Schools. So... So, my concern is that how can someone that been working for the district get overlooked so many times in the process of, um, hiring? Some of the jobs, not to mention some of them, um, that I applied for was actually early childhood transition, coordinator, attendance counselor, student activity, senior family coordinator, health coordinator, student assistance, and this is just a few. So, when I looked at my record, I remember doing forty-one different applications and have not received one interview. And I'm born, raised here, and had been actually a Newark employee for nineteen years. So, these are my concerns, is that how can someone that, from an outsider, come in and get a job when someone is not hired within? I was told that you hired, a third of people, uh, was hired within, I should've been one of them. I should've been one of them. So, this is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ploudon Fitzpatrick. Next Speaker, Teresa Pringle Cole.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Teresa Pringle Cole, and I'm in the Balesburg District. I really need to, I talk a little quickly, so if I'm speaking too quickly, please slow me down. But my concern is that this was my son's first year in the district, and I was greatly disappointed as an ex-educator, DIFIS worker, and other such social, uh, case manager. I was really disappointed, and I would like to be proactive, that's my reason for being here, as opposed to reactive, cuz trust me, I could've taken this in many different venues, but I'm coming here as it takes a village, and we need to proactively get together. What I'm concerned about, we've had several incidents of safety that are continuously occurring on half-days and delayed openings within the school. So, I no longer send my school, child to school. I have already discussed it, it was not resolved. So, my son no longer comes on delayed openings and half-days. And what people need to realize and check, that on social media, you've got something called Newark Wildin' Out, and it's not just what's happening on the streets, it's what's happening in schools. They got school fights on social media that are not being attended to and resolved. These incidents are taking place on school grounds, during the active school day, escalating into the community, putting my son's, uh, safety in imminent danger, because we already know what's going on in the streets. Stuff is not being documented in the classroom that has happened, I have addressed this, it will come up later, that, uh, when incidents, uh, where another child is bullying a student, the teacher has not documented, thus, the, the child has called on the phone, we've got it, we've got a videotape, and it's escalating the school. Thank God, by the grace of God, my son went to mentor at JFK, and this incident spilled into the community. He was attacked by one of the kids in the class and two others. He came home with his phone, his watch, and his wallet. God is good. It could've went far different. And my point for addressing this, because if it's happening to one, there's other students. Students are, are afraid to report this, especially our young black youth, because then some of this stuff is gang-related with kids in the school that we don't know about. They don't want to report it to the police, because see, our kids gotta walk and get to school. My son no longer goes to Boilim, participates in Boilim Rec Boxing. He no longer goes to mentor at JFK, which he was very successful. This is an honor roll student who has become depressed. He started out with honor roll, and it's gone tragically wrong. The other thing I wanted to discuss on two separate occasions, because we were new to the district, it was hard enough for parents coming from a new district to this district to get enrolled, there, there's a lot required, but we did. But his safety's been severely compromised, he's been dropped off by either my sophomore or his step-parent, and he's been sent home without staff, without parent notification. We live in Balesburg, his school is in the South Ward. Thank God he's travel-trained and knew how to get from point A to point B. It is not the first time we have addressed this, and it needs to be brought to the community's attention and to the school board's attention, because we're going in the school, I have yet to receive a handbook, I have documented times to where, this was May second, this letter was sent out. I couldn't get one particular person that I needed to contact, I had to actually demand and stand with security until the person came out. I have been to this school.
Ms. Pringle Cole, your time is up. Can you just tell them what school did your child attend?
Shabazz.
Thank you. Next Speaker, Kashim Holland.
Good evening, all in attendance. My name is Kashim Holland. I reside in South Ward in Newark, and I'm the founder of Financial Boss. Um, I was encouraged to come before the, the, um, the Board of Education, because Financial Boss is a nonprofit organization whereby we strive to create better opportunities for sustainable success through financial literacy. So, I've created a program, um, to teach children, starting at age five, the basics of financial literacy. So, currently in Newark, there is a bill for high school as well as middle school children, however, not for elementary school. Um, I think it's very important for such basics and fundamentals to start at a very early age. I'm sure everybody is familiar with, like, Tiger Woods, um, it was lamented by his father that he started swinging a golf club at age three. So, it's no doubt why by age twenty, he was in the pros, and before age twenty-one, he had won three PGA tours. What I basically would like to do, and why I come before you, is I welcome the opportunity to get the opportunity to, um, actually implement and, um, put this program into Newark School District, in the elementary schools primarily. Excuse me. What I have seen is that by teaching children, um, especially young ones, financial literacy, it sets them up for better financial stability. Um, what it also does is by, it integrates into the family and fosters and strengthens a family bond from a young age, so that they don't have to go through many of the struggles that most of us did as we, um, got to be adults. So, um, again, what I would like to do is perhaps be able to set up an opportunity in order to speak with, um, someone regarding this, um, this program implemented into the school district. Um, again, my name is Kash, founder of Financial Boss, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you very much.
If you could just give your, your information to Ms. Deering.
Ms. Deering, if you can raise your hand, this is right here. Thank you so much. Next Speaker, Diane Gayoso.
Good evening, Diane Gayoso, sixty, Park Place. Welcome back, everyone. I'd like to, uh, to just talk about the board communication. I know that the statement read prior to public participation states, it, it basically tells us that the board and community can't communicate. From the research I did over the summer, I found out that it's a decision that was forced upon the board during the Cami Anderson and Serf dictatorship years. I'm asking the board to, um, consider submitting a motion to restart communication with the board, uh, with the, uh, community. Dr. Janey had communication, even if it was a one, uh, a yes or no answer, uh, he would acknowledge us, okay? And if he didn't have the answer, he would put you in contact with someone that, that would. It wasn't an actual dialogue, it was just a yes, no, speak to this person, we were happy. That's, that's really all we're asking. I'm one of the speakers that he, he helped every time I, I spoke, and, and, um, we were really appreciative about that. I, I know that, uh, that it was an, an agreement, like I said, that was forced upon the board, and, um, it's just been a practice that's been continued. I don't know if, uh, you really don't realize that you can submit a motion to just basically change it. Like I said, I know time is limited, and we can have an actual conversation, but we really, I'm not saying that, that you do, but we really won't feel as ignored if we would at least get a response either via email or via, or, or just a, a yes or no answer, okay? That would, that would, um, uh, get, that would get the community to support the board more, because you guys are making decisions about our kids, okay? Our kids' education are in your hands, and we, uh, we as the community should support you, but also, we also feel that we need to get, um, like I said, we, we need to go to you and say, look, this is what's going on, this is, uh, what we're worried about. I emailed several members over the summer, um, about the comfort room update that I submitted to the PNI Committee last year. I have, only one person responded, and that person wasn't even on the committee that, uh, that handles that, okay? And, you know, I, I was supposed to be in, uh, kept up to date and, and stuff. I'm, I'm just asking you to please consider restarting communication, uh, with, uh, with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gayoso. Next Speaker, Denise Cole.
Okay. I'm here today to cut out everything. I wanna congratulate you, cuz I support you, Roger. Not everything you do, but most of the things you do, so just congratulations. But this is Dear Board of Education Members and Brenda List. This cease and desist order is in, is to inform you that your intimidating and violation of sunshine law NJSA ten four dash twelve against me will not be tolerated. This letter is to demand that your bullying and intimidation tactics must cease and desist immediately. Should you continue to pursue the activities in violation of this cease and desist order, I will not hesitate to pursue legal action against you, including but not limited to civil action and/or criminal complaints. Bullying, bullying, harassing, and failure to provide the written policy included in the ban letter violating my right to express issues concerning the state of Newark Board of Education on, you said for me, uh, the twenty-seventh, or one of them dates, I don't even know what date it was, again, it's in your letter. Please note that I have a right to remain free from your intimidating tactics and will take the responsibility to protect that right. Note that a copy of this letter and record of this delivery will be stored. Note too, that it is admissible as evidence in court of law and will be used as such if you need be in the future. This cease and desist order demands that you immediately discontinue, do not at any point in the future, under any circumstances, do the following to me: pursue, harass, attack, slander, threaten, stalk, shadow, gather information about and/or block my movements in the school community where we are fully operational on social media and throughout New Jersey, and including this open public meeting. Should you willfully choose to continue your current course of action, I will not hesitate to file a complaint with the Superior Court, Attorney General, and County Prosecutor for your ongoing violations of the sunshine law noted previously. This letter does not constitute exhaustive statement of my position, nor is it a waiver of any of my rights and/or remedies in this and other related matters. I demand your immediate compliance, this is an official documentation that will be used as evidence, and I will give it to your secretary over here, and I also want you guys to know that you need to read the Sunshine Act, Board. Keep letting her speak for you, you can individually be sued. You have no right to stop us when we come to this mic, and just because I overspeak three minutes does not mean that I am stopping the board meeting, cuz immediately when I leave, somebody else comes up and speak. According to the Open Public Records Act, you all do not have a right to stop us when we speaking. So, you have to read the laws. You have to know the laws. And the reason why I'm up here public, cuz they sent, she sent me a warning letter in email form, but it stated they hand-delivered it to me and sent the email. I never got a hand-delivered letter.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
It just came to my email today, and she had no law in there. I also want you to know...
Ms. Cole, your time is up. Would like to move on to the next speaker, please?
I sent a Oprah request and asking for the statement that Chief Counsel reads before the public every day to provide the document, the legislation, the law, the policy, or case law that she used to craft that statement. My Oprah request came back from her office saying, denied, no such documentation. So, if she doesn't have a legal reference that she's using to send the letter, it means all she doing is crafting words on a piece of paper and wanting us to believe that it is true.
Next Speaker, Christopher Koenig, are you here?
So, community, know your rights, because she just wrote something on a piece of paper.
Ms. Koenig is not appearing. We will move on to the next speaker, Yolanda Johnson. Is Ms. Johnson pre...
Yolanda Johnson, seven sixty-five Broad Street. Dear Newark Board of Education Members and Brenda List, this cease and desist order is to inform you that your intimidating and violation of the sunshine law NJSA ten four dash twelve against me will not be tolerated. This letter is to demand that your bullying and intimidation tactics must cease and desist immediately. Should you continue to pursue these activities in violation of this cease and desist order, I will not hesitate to pursue further legal action against you, including but not limited to civil action and/or criminal complaints. Bullying, harassing, and failure to provide the written policy included in the ban letter violating my right to express issues concerning the state of Newark Board of Education, six twenty-five, eight twenty, and eight twenty-seven today. Please note that I have a right to remain free from your intimidating tactics and will take the responsibility to protect that right. Note that a copy of this letter and a record of its delivery will be stored. Note too, that it is admissible as evidence in the court of law and will be used as such if need be in the future. This cease and desist order demands that you immediately discontinue and do not at any point in the future, under any circumstances, do the following to me: pursue, harass, attack, slander, threaten, stalk, shadow, gather information, and/or block my movements in the Newark school community where we are fully operational on social media and throughout New Jersey. Note that your behavior is a violation of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four through eleven, failure to invite portion of members to circumvent provisions of Act, uh, NJSA ten four through thirteen, exclusion of public resolution, adoption, and contempt, NJSA ten four dash twelve, meetings open to the public. Should you willfully choose to continue your current course of action, I will not hesitate to file a complaint with the Superior Court, Attorney General, and County Prosecutor for your ongoing violations of the sunshine, sunshine law noted previously. This letter does not constitute exhaustive statement of my position, nor is it a waiver of any of my rights and/or remedies in this and any other related matter. I demand your immediate compliance, this is an official documentation that will be used as evidence. Warm regards. And I'll submit that electronically to each and every last one of you board members, and you too, Ms. Brenda List, and I'll give it to, uh, Ms. Nancy Deering. Thank you.
Next Speaker, Lucy Lane Figueroa. Not appearing, next speaker, Kevin Sinak. Not appearing, next speaker, Malik El Amin. Not appearing, next speaker, Deborah Gregory Smith. I'm sorry, Smith Gregory. Smith Gregory? She's here.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Smith Gregory. Six nine seven South Twelfth Street. I serve as the president of the Newark Branch NAACP. I serve as the president of the NORC branch in double ACP. I had sent a letter um at the end of June in regards um to the facilities being ready for school, the school opening. And I wanted to commend uh the superintendent for the work of getting the facilities um ready. I would encourage and caution you that on the website, there were schools that were shown to be ready, um but they were all in one ward. So we want to have a more comprehensive look at the schools. I have been in some of the schools um and they are um looking good for um the young and looking ready for the young people. I know that you said that there was a lot um to accomplish, but um I wanted to publicly commend you for the part that has been accomplished. Also, last week at the uh business meeting, I had posed some questions. Um I am going to give them to Nancy Deering. I don't have the complete copy with me, but the one thing that I do want to reiterate is um the um the request of the program and instruction committee um and imploding the districts resolve to implement the Amistad Act in the public schools. And we highly recommend the utilization of the 1619 project in schools um that have free curriculums, guides and activities for the students. So I will um submit the letter to uh Ms. Deering. And I wanted to know also, when will the Cambridge report be available on the NORC Board of Education website? A final um note that I have just learned because I live in NORC and I am um affected by what is happening with the water. Um research shows that fresh fruit and vegetables mitigate the effects of lead and they act as a buffer. And so I was listening and you said point three 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 quarters, three quarters. Um and I know that this is a big ask, but with some of the supermarkets in the city, um I would encourage the district to consider uh beefing up the fresh fruit and vegetables and going above what is required because if there is any kind of ingestion ingestion of the lead um at home, and even though the schools are okay, but they're getting something at home, um the fresh fruit and vegetables will help mitigate the impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker Karen Iskey.
Good afternoon. Bilal Walker speaking for Karen Iskey. My name is Bilal Walker. I'm an educator here in NORC, New Jersey.
That's not permitted, mister.
I'm sorry. I understand that. Ms. Uh Iskey and I are working together. If you can give me three minutes of your time.
You can go outside and sign up and we can put you at the end of the list. You cannot speak for Ms. Karen.
If you could give me three minutes of your time, Mr. Leon, please.
Sir, we're giving you-
Asthma is the leading chronic illness among children on average.
Sir.
A classroom of 30 children, about three are likely to have asthma.
Sir, you're interrupting the meeting. You can go outside and sign up and we can hear you. Sir.
We just like to reiterate that you can sign up for the list and echoing uh Madam Chair's.
Ms. Mary Tom- Board Member Thomas, I gave him the procedure. He can go outside and sign up and we can listen to him at the end.
Yeah, reiterating that for him in the event that he missed that.
Mm-hmm.
Just you could just sign up. You can still speak. Just sign up, please.
Next speaker Anna Nieves. Is the Ms. Deering, is the list still outside? Oh, that's very oh. Anna Nieves.
Madam Chair, point of inquiry, is Ms. Iskey available to speak?
No, he stated she is not here. He wants to speak on her behalf and he cannot do that. He can sign up and we can listen to him at the end. Next speaker.
Madam Chair.
Oh, he can't sign up. But I mean, we could. Next speaker Wilhelmina Holder.
Madam Chair, if I may, so it was just lifted up that if we were going to ask him to sign up, we would have to pass a special resolution. May I ask if we could explore that as a board?
It's not a resolution, it's a motion.
So may we make a motion?
Or you can move the motion if you like, since you're proposing it on the floor.
Madam Chair, what I'll do is I'll wait until the formal list concludes and then I'll make a motion. Thank you.
Ms. Holder.
Yes, I was waiting for you to make a motion. Are you making a motion now or am I speaking?
It's your turn, Ms. Holder.
Good evening. Um, Wilhelmina Holder, I'm still at Two Cedar Street. But um Adoreen, you asked about SEL indicators. I found that interesting. One thing that we could do and and one thing that you can tell in working with young people is how they feel about themselves. You want to know an indicator, what it looks like? When children feel good about themselves, they define themselves in a positive manner. When they're hopeful as opposed to feeling hopelessness, when they're able to self-manage, when they're able to um communicate effectively and work collaboratively around challenges, that's how you can define whether we're making progress in that area or not. It also shows up in how they do in school, how often they come to school and what their um test results look like. It's all about self-image. Also, when is the Amistad Act going to be put in the schools? Can we have a deadline? When this is going to start? It's going to start September? And in what grades? Um hopefully K through 12? Um can we get a date? Do we have teachers ready to go with that um curriculum? Um and the other thing you talked about was mentorship, which is he, because it's something that I do deeply believe in. But I'm a little concerned when you said with the career that the mentorship for those working would stop with the first paycheck. I don't think that's correct. I'll tell you why. Probation, most people in jobs now are on probation the first 90 days. So why wouldn't you extend the mentorship through the first year instead of the first paycheck? That's where it really makes sense. So I want the board to review that initiative and extend the mentorship the first year someone's working. That's when they need that support, not the first paycheck. Also, um today, listening to some of the um was very troubling listening to the results and reading and writing in our district. And I I just pondered why our children aren't doing well in that area. And I said to myself, is it because some of our teachers are not lovers of reading or writing? Or the parents or the community or the board members? You see, if people don't see you reading, then you don't have value. You don't hold that in value and ki- kids are watching you talk this hypocrisy. You want them to read, but yet you don't read. You want them to write, they never see you writing. So we need to come together as a community and figure this out because it does affect them at the SAT level because I'm tired of reading essays of children who cannot write a comprehensive paragraph. It's torture. Some of these kids find it torturous and we have to go step by step, which is fine, but it starts in the school and it starts with you and it starts with me and it starts with all of us. They don't know how to research. Why can't we have these tools built in the language arts curriculum? And I know we have a new department chair, I'd like to meet with her about that, from K through 12? Kids aren't even writing book reports. How many of you remember writing book reports? On Friday, every Friday, a book report because you did something in current events. Our children are not even doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Holder.
And that's best practices. And the other thing I want to say is that three years is what we need for language arts. I talked to Dr. Santos, two years is insufficient. Please give our children the tools they need to be successful in life and let's stop playing education. Let's be about education.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Next speaker Latifah Lemon. Not appearing. There was one more speaker, Ms. Deering, that you gave me?
Two more.
Two more. Okay, so that's. Tulun? Uniker? Uniker? Yeah.
Hi. This morning I got a letter and I came-
Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Tulun Uyama Carey. It's misspelling.
Oh, it's misspelled, okay.
Yeah. And to today in the morning, I got a letter and I came here to find out what is it about? And they told me that there will be a meeting and I wanted to attend the meeting, but I didn't prepare anything, so I don't know. I I have been here for the first time. So maybe if you would tell me, what am I supposed to do or should I?
Do you want to address the board or would you like to speak to Ms. She doesn't know? Oh, she doesn't know why she received the letter.
I don't know because I didn't have any email, anything, so I didn't know what to do. I didn't prepare anything.
What type of letter did you receive, Ms. Tulun?
It's about the um I have been in the school and there was an incident. It was about the incident. But I didn't know, so I didn't write.
Okay. If you can speak to Ms. Deering, she'll take all your information and get it back to the Next speaker Uleida Fuentes. Not appearing. And that concludes our public participation part for the evening.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Board Member Norton.
Um, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to extend the speaker's list.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Mary Thomas, seconded by Ms. Norton to extend the public participation portion to allow additional speakers. Is that correct? One or more?
One.
Okay. Any discussion among board members? Board members understand the motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any extensions? Motion carries.
Sir, if you can approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, it's we don't have it on the list. We need it for recording purposes. Thank you.
My name is Bilal Walker, 25 Manchester Place. My apologies, everybody. Asthma is the leading chronic illness among children and on average, in a classroom of 30 children, about three are likely to have asthma. Low-income populations, minorities and children living in inner cities experience more hospitalizations and death. I'm here today to speak to the board. I'm a NORC educator and I lost a student. I lost a student named Shue Bright, April 26, 2019. He was 14 years old. He passed away from an asthma attack and from that moment, I decided that I was going to reach out to any and everybody that could do any and everything to support our city as far as empowering, equipping and educating our students, staff and nurses with the proper education needed to service our students within the city of NORC suffering from asthma. Superintendent, you spoke extensively about 100% attendance and attendance is directly related to how our students breathe. Our students may not be breathing effectively and if we are not educating our staff, if we are not educating our students on how to effectively use their asthma pumps, we are doing them a disservice. When we think about our students, we need to service them holistically. And by holistically, it speaks a lot to what Ms. Murray said about social and emotional learning. And some of our social and emotional like habits that we have can trigger asthma attacks. September 21st in NORC, New Jersey from 9 to 12, I have partnered with the American Lung Association to bring NORC's um asthma awareness day. I will be hosting this asthma awareness day um to effectively um enforce this this mindset that we need to take asthma seriously. In our communities, we are quick to turn our our heads to asthma because it's so prevalent and so common within our communities. And as educators, I can honestly say, as an educator, I did not look at asthma as something that was something that would uh affect the student's attendance, their participation in class, um or their focus. I'm reaching out to the board today asking that you guys take serious consideration into partnering with the American Lung Association, with the Ironbound Community Association, with the NORC Department of Community Health and Wellness, with Clara Moss and Barnabas. They will be there September 1st, offering free services to all 21st, to all parents from 9 to 12 and students during free leg screenings, asthma screenings, um providing students with book bags, providing uh nurses and other school personnel with the education that they need so that we can make them uh asthma-friendly schools. Without your participation, we will not be able to effectively do this. I really hope that you guys can take this into consideration. I will likely forward all of my information to either Ms. Siobhan Anderson or Ms. Adoreen Murray Thomas about details concerning the event. And if you show any interest in it, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Mr. Walk- Mr. Walker, if you can just give that information not to the board members, you give it to Ms. Deering. Ms. Deering then in returns, make sure that all board members receive it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay? Just hand it to her. Superintendent Leon?
Uh, you can stay there.
Yes.
Cost you a minute to get there, so you could stay there a little more time, right? So one of the important things and the reason why I'm doing this because it's on television. Right. So in order to to speak at this meeting.
Superintendent? I can't hear you. Please be quiet. Thank you.
It's just I had a long day, so.
I appreciate you.
Apologize for that. You're required to sign up. It's usually, I believe, the days of the Thursday and that it gets clocked in. Then everyone who has called in during that time period, those are the people that we would expect to allow to speak. In the meeting prior to this one, it's actually um there's a sign up sheet where it's really who are the first 10 people to sign up. And sometimes because a number of people have concerns, that then the board makes a motion and does an extension of the time because obviously everything is allotted based on time. Because technically, we could go on for hours and hours and hours, especially if I have the microphone. So the reason why I wanted to do this is because based on the conversation you and I had, I had a better understanding of what you wanted to talk about, right? I applaud the board for giving the opportunity to actually not only speak, but really the message behind a person that's actually in this room, that you were speaking on their behalf. And what you did is you didn't stay talking the whole entire time. You actually just followed what the procedures are. You respected the board and the board in turn gave you that respect back by giving you the opportunity to speak. So I'm just proud of you. I don't even know you. I'm just proud of you. Because you could have stayed seated and not stood, right? And the fact that you didn't do that and the fact that you came back up, this is very, very important. When you hand it to Ms. Deering, obviously, there are a lot of people who will give us advice of, you know, do this, do that. We'll obviously review all of it and if it actually meets what our requirements are, we will actually not only share it with our principals, we'll post it on the web.
I appreciate you all so much.
All right, now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Hill?
So I just wanted to um apologize to the superintendent and also to the board as well for taking the flyer from um the young gentleman, but also to just say, I got a little bit confused because I'm a I I'm not used to having our regular board meeting in this space. So we're usually used to having a board meeting at a school. So since schools are not open, we had our board meeting here tonight, so I just wanted to apologize for that.
I just wanted to thank- Madam President, uh just so that we clarify, it's not like you you said you took it from him. You didn't. You were looking at the documents so that you could see what it was. I want somebody on at TV land to be thinking that you just went there and snatched it from him. You did not do that.
Madam Chair.
I just also want to mention that uh history was made tonight. Uh this board voted and passed the first contract negotiated, ratified and passed for the first time in 20 years as a functioning board under local control. You know, you guys should be really proud of yourselves. It's a vote that the teachers were anxiously and the union waiting for and it uh passed 9-0. So congratulations to the teachers and to their contract for the next five years.
Madam Chair.
It it passed above 90%. As I mentioned the ratings earlier, I didn't want to say how many members voted, but I just said the percentage. And we look forward to continue to work with the NORC Teachers Union. Thank you. Board Member Norton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um and so I would like to address Ms. Deborah Smith Gregory's uh consideration for providing fresh fruit and vegetables. In finance, Madam BA, I do know the district has already made- And so I would like to address Ms. Deborah Smith Gregory's consideration for providing fresh fruit and vegetables. In finance, Madam BA, I do know the district has already made purchases for meals, but I would like to bring this to the Finance Committee in September. Madam BA.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. I want to confirm this, but I will say this preliminarily. The district has already made an effort to move towards fresh fruit on a daily basis. It's something we did last school year and will be continuing this school year. We made that decision based on looking at the elements of a meal, what we need to meet in terms of nutritional content, and also the availability of product from the Department of Agriculture as excess product. So it's also a way to introduce children to new types of foods, which is one of the goals of the lunch program. So we do serve fresh fruit. Sometimes the fruit is not used in the manner in which we would like it, so we have to work on that. Raisins get squashed on the floor, kiwis get squashed, pears get put down the toilet. So we do have to work on that and encourage our students. But it is something that we are doing on a daily basis. We've actually moved away from canned fruit. But I want to confirm that we're also doing that with vegetables.
Thank you, Madam BA. Just a friendly reminder also that the administration of the PSATs will take place October sixteen during school hours.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Hill?
So Superintendent, I know how much we take pride in our teachers and our staff. And so there's one particular teacher that's in the audience tonight. Her name is Linda Kelly Gamble. She's a teacher at Dr. E. Alma Flag School, and she was honored today at the convocation for having over twenty-five years of service in the district. But she brought it to my attention that she has yet to receive her PIN. So she wanted me to let you know.
So how many years is it? For real? Excellent. So all of the PINs were, at the end of the convocation today, issued to the principals for issuance at their schools or at their offices. So I'm in year twenty-seven in this district? Yes. So I have my twenty-five-year PIN on, so you're going to have it. Come here.
Thank you, Board Member Hill. Madam Chair.
I wasn't finished yet, one more time.
Board Member Hill's not done yet.
So I also wanted to make mention, I had mentioned it before, that on November the twenty-first, at NJIT, there's going to be a college fair, HBCU College Fair, hosted by Madeline Benard. And it's going to be at NJIT from nine a.m. to one-thirty p.m.
What day?
It's on November the twenty-first, from nine a.m. to one-thirty p.m. And I think the awesome thing about this whole job fair, I mean job, not job fair, college fair, is that the students have to pre-register. Once they pre-register, you put in your SAT scores, you put in your GPA, you put in the name of the high school that you go to now, and then they give you a barcode or a badge that you print out. And so when you go over to that station of that college or that university, all they have to do is scan your barcode, and all your information populates right into the computer. And you will also have access to on admissions right at the college fair. So I just wanted to make sure that we get that out to all of our high school seniors. And again, juniors too. I don't know if that's going to be-
Yes, so that's the issue now, because remember, when I did the college fair for our seniors, they were extremely appreciative, obviously, of it. But they were like, yo, we really could have had this our junior year. So what we did is we actually had, in the spring, a college fair for juniors. So I would say, we target the juniors, and then obviously, any senior who has not made a final decision in terms of their applying, to provide them the opportunity to do that. Can you get that information to me through Ms. Deering? All right? And then if I could have that, when could I have it? All right, so I'll forward it to Ms. Ortiz. You're going to be on this. Okay, I'll copy you and Dr. Santos, and we'll discuss a couple of things about making that happen.
And so I just wanted to give up-
And just for the education of everyone, so an HBCU is a historically black college or university.
And so I also just wanted to give a shout-out to some of our boys for, over the summer, participating in some basketball tournaments that were held throughout the city. West Side took the win for their summer tournament against Central High School. And Arts High School made it to the championship game, but they lost against Jersey City. But I think I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I also made mention of it in our community and parent, yeah, that committee. Just because our young men could have been out somewhere doing other things with their summer, but just for them having that dedication and that drive just to give up their summer and the focus clearly on basketball, I just think that was a huge accomplishment. And I think that we, as a board, should at least give them some type of certificate or acknowledgement or something, because that was something that they did, yeah.
So let's be reminded that the basketball season doesn't start until winter. And so there are no students in this school district that participated in any basketball tournament that is associated with their high school, because if, in fact, they did so, and they actually won the championship when the season actually was in existence, it would disqualify all of their wins. So I believe that what you were referring to were students that are in our high schools that are playing basketball during the summer, but are not part of the basketball teams, because that would be non-compliant with state regulations.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Is that clear? Okay, now we're good.
Madam Chair. Board, Board Member Hill's not done. Can we please wait till she's done? After that, we're following with Norton, Murray Thomas, and we are done.
So this is my last thing for the evening. I just wanted to give a big shout-out to all of my board members and to all of the district staff, who showed me so much support and love in the passing of my father over the summer. So I just wanted to publicly thank all of you guys who went above, above, and beyond from start to finish. And I just wanted to thank you guys publicly. Thank you.
Board Member Norton?
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. So I, I'm not aware if the board acknowledged Weekway High School for their band championship. And so if we have not done so already, may we please acknowledge their championship, the Weekway Band Championship of the twenty-nineteen, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year? Are they at the September board meeting?
Last week, yeah.
I don't remember that.
Yeah. We mentioned it during the meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
Madam President, I think that, you know, the whole idea that every time our students are doing beyond what they're supposed to do, if you will. Like, they wake up and they go to school, and they go home, right? But it's everything else as to why they went to school that's extremely important, right? It's what their teacher was teaching that excited them to leave home to actually get to school and to school on time. It is meeting their friends and doing something productive with them. It is about what occurs before school and after school. And I think that what the marching band at Weekway High School did is a little bit more than just participate it. And so we need to take the opportunity to obviously recognize them in the public for that. So, you know-
So for the September day-
We will make sure that we move that along to get them properly recognized, make sure that they can attend, make sure that the director is available, things of that nature. It would be a great thing to do.
Yes, thank you so much.
Board Member Norton, just send all the information over to the Chair of Community and Student Life, Pickles, Parent Engagement, and Student Life, and we'll make sure we have them on the agenda for September. Board Member Murray Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to just echo the sentiments of acknowledging all the incredible work that went on over the summer to make sure our babies have what they need this fall. The superintendent stated earlier how many teachers and staff members we had coming together both voluntarily, literally just to make sure that our kids had curriculum that was reflective of their brilliance, that have a curriculum that, you know, took them to a new height. So I just want to personally just acknowledge every single person who was a part of that. I'd like to acknowledge the students as well. Our babies could have been doing a lot of other things this summer, but most of them were doing what they were supposed to do and above and beyond. Like was just shared, going to practice every day, taking care of little brothers and sisters, making sure they got to summer camp on time. I live right off of Springfield Avenue. It was, you know, it was one of the main corridors in the city. And so every day on my way to work, I'm seeing kids taking the skateboard, on the bus, on their way to a summer program or sports. And so so many of our babies are doing what they have to do to excel and to thrive, not just survive. And I just want to acknowledge that. And for all the parents, community people, educators who helped make that possible, we salute you, we thank you, and you make us better. And so I'll close with just saying that you literally, as we grow, we're growing with you, and we look forward to, you know, learning and growing with you. And we thank you for everything you do to make us better as a board and as a district.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Norton.
To adjourn.
To adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Murray Thomas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Just a friendly reminder, our next meeting will be held September twenty-fourth at Malcolm X Shabazz High School. In September?